Good evening. I'll call to order the February 13th, 2025 Dambie Select Board meeting. And I would ask that you rise and join me in a moment of silent respect and remembrance for Hiram Fisk, a native son whose family came here in the 1700s and who honorably held many town offices over the years. Please join me in the pledge of the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Abbott.
Here.
Eaton.
Here.
Fuller. Haynes. Bender.
Here.
This is our procedure for remote access in public meetings and comment at the board meetings. Dambie Select Board and Planning Commission meetings are open to the public in person and remotely, but are not public meetings per se. Public attendees, both in person and remote participants who wish to comment on agenda items, will be given an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting to do so. As in the past, written communications may also be sent to the boards for consideration. Businesses conducted and votes are cast by board members. The chat feature is to only be used by remote participants to alert the host to technical difficulties; it is not for private conversations. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for public participation are: Remote attendees will be muted by the online host upon joining the meeting; remaining so unless recognized to speak. Participants should arrive on time and state their name for the record. Those who desire to speak in order to comment or question should use the hand raising function and will be recognized in the order in which the hands were raised. Remote participants, when recognized, will unmute and clearly identify themselves by first and last name and the area of town in which they reside. Comments and questions are limited to two to three minutes. Anyone who desires to speak longer than that should arrange to be placed on the agenda beforehand. General ground rules are that speakers will not be interrupted; there will be no cross-talk between members of the audience; the speaker will treat the proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue, not personalities. So who do we have participating remotely?
We have Lauren Dever, Bill Richardson, Teri Parker, Annette Smith, Gary Dur, Lynn Lawson, Bill Payne, and Renata Ellard.
Okay, thank you. We do have a minor change, an addendum, to the agenda, and that is under New Business. The state has requested that we appoint a health officer, and the recommendation would be to reappoint Ann Davis. So are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? Not hearing any, I will entertain a motion to set the agenda.
I'll make a motion to set the agenda. With the addition of the new business.
I will second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we'll move on to public comment. Chris?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask if anyone on the Select Board will be making any additions to new business or old business that you've not just stated?
No.
And then under Old Business, I wanted to know if you could cover what happened last month on the ATV ordinance. You had it under a pretty generic statement of articles for the ballot. And I think everybody's pretty aware that the ATV thing is a pretty hot-button issue. So I think it's, I don't think that was handled very well, especially since it was passed without, with improper information. In other words, it had been on the ballot in 2022, and the board made it clear that it had not been. So I found that really disturbing, that that would have gone forward. So if you guys could address that in, under the Old Business, I'd appreciate that. Do you have any questions on what I asked, or?
Um, no, but my statement on that is that any motions for ballots on the article could have come up at that time.
And you thought that was just a regular old, you know, just like 500 bucks for the Northshire ambulance, or? You didn't think that would be interesting for people to speak up about?
That's not the time to speak about. The time to speak about it is how you-
I just wanted to see how you operate, and that's, I get it. I get it now. So I appreciate that.
Okay.
Um, I've got Bill Payne.
Yes.
Bill, you may go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Yes.
Yeah, I was calling in that the ATVs also, and there was a vote last month, Brad. You said there was a vote, there was a change in 22. And it was 330 against and 204 votes for, so it was 61% against. And really, nothing's changed, so I'm not sure why we're doing this again. Last, in 2024, Tom Fuller actually suggested we don't do this until the law enforcement. Issue had been addressed, I don't think anything's been addressed there. Steve Haynes said he would be willing to consider it if there were trails that we could connect to, and there were no trails at this point in Dambie. So has anything changed, Brad?
Towns can vote on things as often as they wish. There are a number of towns in the state that have ATV ordinances that did not pass on the first vote. And the purpose of this is so that people who have requested that this came up was that they could use their machines to go from point A to point B. So if they want to take their garbage down to the dump, they could do so in their side-by-side. If they want to go help their neighbor with some project that requires a winch or a dump body, they could do so. And part of what happened the last time around was there was a lot of false information. Many of the people who requested this are second homeowners here, who don't even get a right to vote and felt disorganized. So that's all the comment that I have on it. Does anybody else?
Um, Annette Smith, those are hand raised as well.
Annette?
So you set the rules that we're not allowed to talk during the meeting, and we can only talk during public comment. There was nothing at all about the subjects that would be taken up under Old Business, and this comment you just made, it's all shit. Who are the people who have asked for this to be on the ballot? I mean, there's been no discussion whatsoever. So regardless of how I feel about the issue, the way that people are running these meetings and our town government goes against the recommendations of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, Secretary of State, send you the guidance from them, that, and it's not just for the public, it's for the members of the Select Board. So I don't know how many times I have said this to you. All you have to do is either let us talk during the meeting so that we can weigh in and say, hey, yeah, by the way, we voted on this already, and correct any misinformation that comes up, or we have the opportunity to address the subjects that you are going to bring up under things that aren't on the agenda. And the point of being on the agenda is not only for us, members of the public, but for those on the Select Board. Did any of the other Select Board members know that putting an ATV ordinance on the warning was going to be coming up at the end of last meeting?
I can say that to me, I wasn't, I understood there was going to be probably discussion on or something brought about the ATV ordinance, and I was aware that it was voted on before. This is Greg Eaton, by the way, and I was aware it was voted on before. And from my take, I am okay with it going to the town to say if they want to flip whether to pursue it or not, and if they vote no, to me, it's over.
Were you aware that it was something that you were going to be asked to vote on at the end of the meeting?
No.
Ken, what about you?
I'm okay with the, with being put out to the vote to see if the ordinance would like to be adopted with-
That's not my question. My question is, when that came up at the end of last meeting, did you know that it was going to come up as a topic to be voted on?
You had, all of the Select Board members had received a text about that.
I asked Ken, he answered.
That is correct.
Yes, we did receive texts.
Greg just told you that that is correct. So yes, every Select Board member knew about it.
Why didn't you put it on the agenda, Brad?
I listed articles for the agenda. Anything else could have come up as well.
Right, so now you put us in the position, I have to ask you, are any of you planning to bring up anything else under Old Business or New Business at the end of this meeting?
That question was just asked and answered, Annette.
I mean, you spent all the rest of our ARBA money without putting it on the agenda or telling us about it at the end of a meeting. This is not-
No, that's not true, Annette.
That is true, and I went and looked at the minutes, and we've already had this discussion. I'm really not interested in fighting with you, and I can assure you that it does not please me at all to have to say this to you. I am simply asking for a reasonable democracy in this town and for the public and the members of the Select Board to be open and have a friendly discussion about things that affect our town. I am very tired of fighting, I don't want to fight with you, and can we please just have a fair warning if you're going to be talking about things? I think it was, it is, it is really treating us like bad children to make us talk only at the beginning and then not allow us to weigh in later on. We've always been able to weigh in on topics as they come up. And so, you know, please, please make an effort to keep the public informed about the topics that are coming up at the meeting.
Thank you for your opinion, Annette.
Um, Renata would like to speak as well, and Lynn Lawson.
No, barely.
Oh, okay.
That's better.
Okay, thank you.
Now we can hear you.
Thank you. I did want to echo some of the comments that have already been made, so I won't rehash that. But you just mentioned something that may or may not be of concern, that everyone got a text about something that you would be talking about. Is that an open meeting law violation?
Not to my knowledge.
If more, you have a forum on the text thread, I believe that is the case, so I'm hoping you can look into that. But what I also wanted to say is that the wording on the, on the ballot, you know, obviously shows, the way I'm reading it, Brad, it shows that you're very much in favor of the ATV ordinance, and you're saying that most people are in their 60s and they're responsible people, and it doesn't, really, the wording doesn't have room for an alternate viewpoint. In my opinion, the ballot should do a, you know, a pro ATV ordinance and a con ATV ordinance so that everyone is informed.
Well, your opinion is different than the town attorney's because he's the one who wrote the question.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I'm, I'm just sharing public comment, in public comment, if that's okay. But yeah, I think I would have liked more even-handed, so I don't know if I need to connect with the town attorney, but I think a more even-handed language would be helpful to town residents. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then Lynn Lawson.
Lynn, you are coming up later on the agenda, so I don't know if you have something else that you want to talk about now, but you are listed on the agenda later. Can you hear me?
She's still muted.
I don't know, she's still muted, she hasn't unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can hear you now.
Okay. So, um, I've been listening to this ATV ordinance thing, and I, you know, I really had to comment on that because, um, you know, I have been, had an experience a few times on the Scottsville Road, and I'm going to leave that people's children, nameless, you know, had their children riding up and down the Scottsville Road in their RTVs or, you know, not a four-wheeler, but the side-by-side. And they were, they were riding, and they were, they were going very, very fast, and if, you know, I was coming around a corner, and these were kids, and if I wasn't, you know, on my mark, they probably would have, like, had an accident. So, you know, I just kind of had to say that about this.
Well, it sounds to me like you just made the perfect case for having an ATV ordinance.
But no.
Well, yes, you did, because at this point, we don't have one, and if we did, it would control speeds and so forth. But, you know, this is, this is really not a topic for debate here, this would be appropriate at town meeting.
So I thought that this was already passed.
No. All we did is put a question on the ballot to poll the voters, and it's a non-binding article, that's all.
Well, I don't know, I just, you know, I'm, listen, I'm not against responsible people on their machines, you know, helping out a neighbor or something like that, but flying up and down a road, you know, kids behind the wheel is, you know, it's not really smart.
No, it's not, and I'm right there with you on that.
So, so when is my agenda coming up?
You are coming up after the discussion about an open public meetings law facilitator.
Am I going to be able to speak on that?
Yes, that's why you're on the agenda, because I anticipated that you wished to speak for more than three minutes.
Okay, so should I lower my hand now?
Yep, and we'll get back to you in a little bit. Any other public comment? Michelle?
Uh, Michelle, you see, I would like to speak as a towns person. So that kind of got my wheels turning, because yes, if we had an ordinance, if it passes and you guys go through all that, that'd be great. However, since we do have the resource in the room, I'm curious if Deputy Cram would speak on how could he enforce, if you put an ordinance out, you know, you can do this, you can do that. I know it's different when it comes to ATVs and such than it is with cars. Can I put you on the spot and ask?
Not at the moment, but when you give your presentation, could you incorporate that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
That's all.
Any other comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion, and I just want everybody to know that I have looked at numerous Select Board and Town Council meetings, because they're all on YouTube, and lots and lots and lots of towns operate their monthly meetings the same way we do with the public comment in the front. So, the next item to consider is a motion to adopt the minutes of the Select Board meeting of January 9th and the emergency meeting of February 6th.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Are there any corrections or additions? Not hearing any? All those in favor of the two sets of minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Motion to ratify the warning of the 2025 town meeting, specifically changes to Article 6 made by the Select Board, signed by the Select Board on January 27th, 2025.
I'll make a motion.
Motion is made.
I will second that.
There's a second, and this addresses some numbers that were transposed and incorrectly discussed at the January 9th meeting. The corrections were made in time to have the correct numbers on the warning. So, any other discussion on that? All those in favor of ratifying the warning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, motion carries. Now we have a report from our Sheriff's Department and Deputy Cram. It's been brought to our attention that you are having difficulty enforcing speeding tickets because the speed limit signs have too much distance in between them.
So correct on to a degree. Not just your town, several towns. Unfortunately today, it's world, we're running into a lot more defense attorneys that are finding niche ways to get their clients out of stuff. In some of my recent case hearings in court, I ran into initially where the defendant's attorney come in and basically said that, hey, my client is speeding on that road because he thought the speed limit was 50 because he didn't see a posted speed limit sign for more than a mile. Judge looks at it and goes, well, reasonably, mile's quite a far distance on a 25 mile an hour speed limit road. So thinking 50 miles an hour makes sense. The issue we're running through is if there's a road that's not posted in St. Vermont, it's automatically considered a 50 mile per hour speed limit zone. Town Dambie's done pretty well of keeping up with that. There is some roads where some sign issues were issues more in the past. As you know, most of the people in the room I've met before, my last time down here, I've wanted to meet down here for a few months this time, so taking a drive around and getting used to all the roads again, and seeing that some of the signs have been replaced already. But there is still some issues that I'm seeing with signs. Just for instance, a few that I've noticed, Smoky House Road, even though it's only a short road, has no sign, speed limit signs. So it makes it very difficult for us to issue any tickets if we see somebody cranking through there, 45, 50, coming up, even that little short rap road. Dambie Mountain Road, I get quite a few complaints about that in the mornings, about people speeding coming from the Wells-Paul area coming up that road. The issue we have there is those speed limit signs are a mile and a half apart. There's a document that was put out by the V-Trans Training Center back in 2016, it was a guide for the Vermont towns on speed limits and how to post. Per that document, it's gonna take me one second to pull it back up here in front of you as well. It's page 18 of that document says, there's no minimum for distance between speed limit signs, but they recommend, so a 25 to 30 mile an hour zone could be signed about every half mile. So we're almost triple that by the time the actual sign hits. Just for instance, on that road along Dambie Mountain Road, there's only three signs posted either direction, one at each end of the road and one in the middle. It's quite a far distance to really go without seeing a speed limit sign. Dambie Hill Road, it's about a mile between signs, and that's a 25, so again, it's about a half mile more than they recommend. And Brook Road, similar, it's about a mile apart between signs. So it's not that they're not properly signed. State of Vermont could argue that, yes, they do have signage and the operator shouldn't be paying attention, but a good defense attorney is going to fight us on that, and I've seen us lose tickets less. Unfortunately, we're running into a lot of judges that used to be defense attorneys, so we're also fighting that issue in some cases. It just makes things difficult on our side. So I just ask that the towns kind of review maybe that document, I can forward a link to Brad or whoever gets to that document, and maybe have your road crews take a ride and say, hey, yeah, these signs are kind of far apart, we should put an extra one in here, make sure we, would help us on our side of things. I did speak with Mr. Abbott about some speeding issues in town the other day, some of the back roads. We've been moving off main roads and getting more into those dirt road areas for town, now they're back down this way and trying to slow some people back down for you guys. Just to touch briefly on the ATV issue, I don't want to dive too much into that because it sounds like it's already a pretty bad point of contention down here. I work, obviously, for four towns, I cover what they call regional patrol, which includes Ira, Timmott, Dambie, Milltown. Ira does have an ATV ordinance for some of the roadways, so we have seen some of that stuff. Quite frankly, it's a lot like a motor vehicle. If there's an ordinance in place that covers the roadway, we can enforce it, whether it's a speeding violation, registration, insurance, we can enforce it as long as it's on the roadway. Once it gets off onto a state trail, then it becomes a game warden issue unless we're contracted by VASA, which we used to do for snowmobiles. We're not currently doing that, Sheriff's Office, just due to staffing and obviously equipment issues, trying to get an ATV to do that type of stuff makes it a little hard for us. But if it was on a roadway, we could enforce the laws, we could uphold those. Right now, I see kind of a mixture, I do see some kids on ATVs flying around the roadways, but regardless of whether there's an ordinance in place or not, as you already know, as Lynn Lawson already said, she's had kids flying around corners on ATV, they're already dealing with it. It's not going to change whether we have an ordinance or not, as those kids are still going to speed, there's still going to be a problem. The ordinance just allows us to enforce it more. Right now, we could stop them, tow it, you know, write them an ATV on roadway ticket, but if it, they had an ordinance in place, it allows more than money instead of going to the state to come back to the town. It's not much in phase role, unfortunately, with the way they have changed fines around, but at least that money would come back to Town Dambie. I, just based off my experience with Ira, we haven't had a whole lot of ATV issues. Most issues I have in Ira with that has been snowmobiles or four-wheelers going off of the roads into farm fields, tearing up some of the fields. And generally, the farmers are pretty relaxed about it, they understand to a point where, yeah, they're just messing around, it's not a big deal, let's see if that's the worst problem, obviously that, and that's the trail issues or just kids wanting to get off and hit a mud hole in the middle of a cornfield. But down here, I don't know if you have those same issues because you don't have, as you said, a lot of trail infrastructure, so I don't know if you're going to have a lot of trails going out through those fields or if it's going to be more people riding on the roads. I could tell you, I've seen several ATVs with older gentlemen driving down the edge of the road. Most of the time, I'll pull up next to them to say, hey, you're not supposed to have that on the road, and give them that kind of stern warning because they're not being unsafe about it, they're just trying to get to that neighbor's house. So we're kind of in that gray area right now where, yes, we can enforce it to a degree. Would an ordinance help us enforce it? Yes, it would help us more. But same time, if it's not what the town wants to do, we understand, we're going to continue to do the job and see what we have. That's why I say, and I'm not sure if anybody has any questions on that for me.
Yeah, I have a question. In those other towns, these ordinance, these vehicles have to be legal.
Correct.
Registered, insurance on them, no different than a snowmobile or anything else. So it's not, you have a wheeler and you can just go on the road with it. This thing needs to be legalized.
Correct.
And that would actually help and make things safer for someone that's coming at them. That's, you know, that's my feeling, that makes these, these ATVs and UTVs not really safer, but more respectful for the other people that are using the roads.
Correct. So it's the same as a snowmobile in that case where- So, it's the same as a snowmobile in that case where everybody who's riding on a VASAP trail has their snowmobile, is supposed to have it registered and insured. That way, if there is a motor vehicle crash involving a snowmobile, there's insurance on both sides, both the motor vehicle and the snowmobile have coverage. It would be the same thing for ATVs. Your ATV would have insurance coverage, so that way if there was a crash, insurance companies could sort that out versus the driver having to take it all on because the ATV didn't have insurance. Like I said, you're going to have those problems regardless, whether you have that ordinance or not. You're going to have people who don't register their vehicles, they don't register their ATVs, they don't insure stuff. We see it with cars, you're going to see it with ATVs, whether you have the ordinance in place or not, we're going to see that.
And as it was stated in the select board letter, the ordinance would be developed with public input.
I have a question on that sign piece. So, the state, they had to put out a recommendation back in 2016, or a set of guidelines, but they're just recommendations, it's not actually tied to like the town, like how we take care of the roads, you know, there's different requirements states have, how we take care of it, that sign ordinance was just a recommendation or is that a guideline?
Correct. It appears it's a guideline for the towns when outlining, it kind of came out at the same time there was a generic kind of blank form for how to set up speed ordinances. It was all combined in the same document, allowed towns to kind of see how other towns are doing and try to keep everybody together. On that, like I said, there's no minimum distance, but it also doesn't say there's a maximum distance on speed limit. The issue we run into is what people think is reasonable. And that's what a lot of this comes down to when we go to a civil hearing, which the traffic ticket is a civil matter, is the judge has to see what's reasonable for the average person. Is the average person going to drive two miles out seeing a speed limit sign and think it's 25, or are they going to think it's 50?
I thought there's responsibility to the owner, if you drive by 25, it's 25 until you see a sign that says different inside.
You would assume, unfortunately, we're running into the latter of that, where, hey, I drove two miles, I didn't see a single speed limit sign, it's reasonable to suspect. You see another sign in that distance. I see it from both sides, and unfortunately, as I said, when it comes to seeing it from both sides.
I get it.
Part of our testimony when we go on the law enforcement, we have to say that the road is open to free flow of public traffic. If we don't say that, the judge should take it out. We have to say the road is properly posted at. If we don't say that, the judge should take it out. So, they are finding the most unique things to throw tickets out on us. It's making it a bit difficult. Most of us are pretty in tune with what the judges are looking for these days. But as we come across more and more of those little issues, I try to bring it up to the town so we can address it before it really bites us in the butt.
Would you happen to know whether or not the driver's manual that people have to go through before they get their license addresses that?
The speed limits? I'm not aware. It's been quite a while, obviously, since I've taken that driver's test.
I mean, a type of question that when you see a speed limit sign, until you see a different speed limit sign, you are to do that speed?
Correct. I would believe so, that in your driver's training, that you would assume there would be a portion that covers that, that once you see a speed limit sign, you're required by law to stay at that speed limit or under until you see a change. But I said, again, it comes down to the reasonableness of how far do you drive to that speed limit without seeing a single sign, and you assume that it's still the same speed. You know, unfortunately, as I said, we live in St. Vermont, snowplows hit signs, weather takes signs out, motor vehicle accidents take signs out, we run into that issue. And it's, it's not just your town that this is in, this is in several towns. I've got a couple other ones I need to address as well, where crashes have taken out signs two years ago, and signs still aren't replaced. So, it's going on more than just down here in Dambie, but this is one of the things I wanted to address with all the towns, and I have an, Mr. Abbott mentioned it to him the other day, so we could try to get this on the books and get fixed.
Yep, and that's what we're working on. Any other questions for Justin? Okay, thank you very much for taking us here.
Obviously, if anybody has any questions or concerns going forward with the signage or speed limits, even the ATV stuff, feel free to reach out to the sheriff's office, ask for me and the one that's re-assigned back down here full time. For everybody who is on, well, the web access doesn't know me, it's Corporal Cram here at sheriff's office. Also, I do have some other resources for the ATV stuff. I've got a couple of local game wardens, one that actually lives in Ira, which has ATV ordinances. They could also probably step in and answer questions on that too, if you had questions.
And you said someone new is coming on to replace you. When will that happen?
I'm not sure when. Eventually. But every couple of years, we try to rotate towns around, keep fresh eyes everywhere. My move back down here was kind of a last minute change, was not expected. We had another officer who just was taking a different position, so I got reverted back down here because I knew the townspeople and I knew the town, and it was an easy step for me to take. So, I would assume at some point in the future, maybe even the next year or so, you will see a new body down here. I'm also a field training officer for the sheriff's office, so I will have some other officers riding with me at different times as they train and learn the areas. So, you may see more than just my face down here, but I am once full time assigned down here at this time.
And do you carry out other functions that the town specifically has not asked for, like, we definitely ask that you enforce speed limits, but do you carry out other functions of the court?
Yes.
And are they billed to us?
No. Generally, if we're, take an example of serving a subpoena for the courthouse, that is generally served under civil process. The only time it may fall under the town is if it's like a trespass order or a abuse prevention order. Those tend to go under the town just because that's a knock, sign here, here's a piece of paper, have a good day. The trespass orders can be requested by any person, any towns member, any business for any reason. So, that falls under the town because generally it's one neighbor wants to trespass the other neighbor, or a business wants to trespass somebody because they stole from them. So, that does fall under the town by coming with trespass orders.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And next, we will turn it over to Matt Gasparretti, the chairman of the Mount Tabor Select Board. And we've been talking with Mount Tabor for a couple of months now, locating the transfer station. So, maybe, Matt, if you back up a little bit, that mic might pick you up.
Run over these tables here. Is that good for you?
Well, ask William, he's the...
William, is that good for you?
Perfect.
Okay, so, yeah, we've had a chance, the Mount Tabor Select Board has had a chance now to finally sit down as a group and spend a little time discussing combining the two transfer stations, Mount Tabor and Dambie's. Mount Tabor, we've agreed to, that we will, well, that we can hesitantly kind of move forward, we're kind of cautious about a couple of things. Ultimately, it'll probably end up to, you know, to you guys. So, what we have discussed as a select board is we would agree to your 10-year lease. It would be a no-cost lease or a low cost, I don't know how we write it up, whether it's a dollar lease or dollar a year, whatever. We can figure that out. Mount Tabor would want to make sure that we are properly insured as well as Dambie would be insured, but, you know, we would just need to make sure that Mount Tabor is also fully insured, whether that's a hold harmless agreement or whatnot, it's not my area of expertise.
And do you get your town insurance through Vermont League?
Yes, I believe so. Yes.
We can, we do too, and that should be easy to figure out.
We would need to maintain access to the cave, is something that would need to happen. Once again, we've discussed this already, no natural resources to come out of the land, you know, no timber, no gravel, no sand. If you needed to rearrange the land and, you know, you want to use some of the gravel to make a ramp up to recycling, absolutely, go ahead. You know, that would be fine, but not removing any material or anything. There were concerns on our select board about, about the layout, you know, about how you would accommodate the traffic, whether it would be, you know, two dumpsters or the compacters. Ultimately, it would be up to you guys because you would have total control on how you want to run the thing. As Tom and Greg, last time they came to our town select board meeting and we discussed it, they had said that they had brought up the possibility of Mount Tabor approving any plans, signing off on a final plan. That is something we'd like to take you up on, and, you know, if you guys draft something up.
So, incorporate that into the lease.
Yep, yeah, so that, you know, run it by us and...
Yeah, we discussed, we went to a meeting, we had a discussion about, you know, once we first move forward, that Mount Tabor will be able to look at and approve, basically agree to what our layout changes. Something, it has, the site has to change if we move forward, it can't stay the same. And they just wanted to have, we felt it was a reasonable offer for the town to have, say, and how we decided to rearrange the site to accommodate both towns, so.
Let's see, what else? One of our biggest concern basically would be that the Mount Tabor residents, so in exchange for the land used, the Mount Tabor residents would get to use the transfer station at the same cost as a Dambie residence. So, the Mount Tabor residents would pay whatever, and that would be, that would be throughout the entirety of the contract, you know, that there would never be a scenario where Mount Tabor's paying $5 a bag and Dambie's paying $3 a bag.
Apparently, it was brought up at the meeting that maybe many, many decades and decades ago that might have happened, it might have caused some, but that's way before my time. It might have been...
Way before my time as well, but it's, you know, we've had concerns from some people saying that Dambie and Mount Tabor had had deals in the past decades ago, and that it did not go well for Mount Tabor.
What if Dougie remembers?
Don't remember a thing. I, you know, I wasn't around for that. So, you know, I, I've lived in Dambie and Mount Tabor, and, you know, I don't see a reason why the two towns couldn't make it work personally. You know, if, if you guys can make that little space work out there, then I think you can certainly make down at our transfer station work. It's got to be three or four times bigger. But yeah, that's where we stand. Let me see here. Oh, compost, I don't know if you guys have a plan for compost, or if you take compost, that was a question that...
Well, just the food scraps.
The food scraps, yeah, yeah. And we've got something down there right now too. But, you know, ultimately, ultimately, everything would be you guys design it, set it up the way you want. If you want to use compactors, great. If you want to use two dumpsters, great. I don't think it'll work with one dumpster. But, you know, we'll have to obviously write up, get the lawyers involved and let them do what they do, write up a contract, but, yeah, we're willing to move forward with it if you guys are.
Is there anything in your, in a setup plan that you do not want to do?
Good question. Trying to think. No, nothing came up that we said, no, we do not want, you know, we would like it clean and tidy and orderly, like anyone would expect it to be. So, we do not want, you know, we do not want it to be disorderly, but...
Well, we do have to have a permit, as you do now and as we do now, and part of what happens in that process is state inspections. So, obviously, everybody's, has worked and I would assume would continue to work to keep it a clean, safe place.
Yeah.
I think you guys have brought up at the meeting, which would be taken care of in that, like the layout approval, something to do with, you guys had some other maybe future plans for a portion of it, or something to do with...
There was discussion.
But to make sure that that was open to the, to you guys, that would be taken care of during the layout piece.
Yep, and we had, I think primarily that was referencing, we had explored the option of trying to buy a piece of property to the north, which has since been sold anyway. So, I think any plans to do anything there are on the back burner at the moment.
And I know the other question that came up at that meeting was whether, I think Tom had asked it, whether the town, you know, if Mount Tabor is going to put together the first, go with the draft lease or Dambie or whatever, and I don't know if we ever...
I thought that you guys had offered to draft up a lease, but if not, then I'm sure we could, we could figure out who wants to take a go at it.
I think, Matt, this is just my opinion, again, but this is excellent to hear from them. We have, I still think we have some legwork to do.
Oh, absolutely. We have to come up with a plan. So, my question would be, should we have a joint workshop with you folks?
To kind of...
So, if something shows up as some kind of a red flag that somebody doesn't like, we can get it ironed out rather than go to all that work and have it incorporated as exhibit one or whatever in a lease.
Sure.
And then somebody say, well, you know, now there's three dumpsters instead of two or whatever.
No, and I think, you know, the more ideas, probably the better, the more opinions, you know, someone had floated the idea at our last meeting saying, oh, I wonder if you could add a new driveway coming off seven and make one come in and one go out, an entrance and an exit, you know? That would also obviously be up to you, but it's an interesting idea of having a one-way to help with any congestion. You know, whether you go with it or not, doesn't matter, but...
And since you mentioned that, would there be any restrictions that you're aware of at this time about widening the existing?
I don't believe, I don't know of anything that would prevent you from doing that.
Because that seems to be where there could be a bottleneck.
Oh, you would definitely, you know, that gate would need to be bigger, you'd need to be able to have cars going in and out at the same time. So, yeah, it would have to be.
We might have some trouble, the state might not want to have, they're not always big fans of adding accesses to it, but that's, we can, that's why I think the workshop, if you can have it, honestly, to me, if it's on...
Right, too, we could probably get...
Where you're looking at stuff and having that discussion.
Mark Shea down for that too.
Yeah, but we're open to it, you know, we're...
Oh, it's good to hear.
It's very positive.
Yeah, we're on board if you guys, you know, if we can figure out something that works for all of us.
Okay, well, let's get through town meeting, and then maybe later on in March or early April, have a workshop where we all get together. I'd rather do it, you know, as a special workshop, I think, than just at a select board meeting because it's going to take some time to...
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you guys. Have a good one.
Okay, we have received a resignation from Pam Giotti. It says, please accept my resignation as of today, January 30th, 2025, for my position as one of the town auditors. I have accepted a part-time position and will not have the time for the auditor position. So, a motion to accept the resignation, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. So, now, the next part of that is to authorize posting the vacancy. And the way this works, since it is too late to have someone get a nominating petition and be put on the ballot, there is one position already open, which no one has chosen to put their name in, so we will be having one write-in candidate, whoever gets the most votes written in, I hope it's not Mickey Mouse, will be elected as an auditor, and then we need to advertise the position, or we can just appoint if you have somebody that is just dying to have this wonderful job. We could appoint. I personally like the idea of advertising it and seeing who's interested.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with advertising it.
So, like, when, if you do that, I mean, obviously, you're looking, we advertising as soon as possible for, I mean...
It's important to have... It's important to have three auditors and we have functions basically with on again, off again, sometimes two people, sometimes one person, and that's really not the intent of the.
Right.
The board of auditors.
I'm okay posting for it, see if anybody.
So um, we can post it fairly soon. When would you like to have um letters of interest in by?
You gotta give a few weeks, don't you?
Yeah, I'm thinking the April meeting.
Try to give, you know, ideas on where we're gonna post it to get the most advertising out of it, I mean, you wanna do all?
Well, obviously put it on our website, we'll put it up around town. I don't know if you want to spend the money on advertising it in the news guide or.
Put on the forum and stuff, right? You could put on the front porch forum and stuff, right? Without too much trouble. I'm just trying to wait if we're gonna do it to try to get out as much as we can without too, without.
Exactly, right.
Hassle. So you're thinking by the April meeting, which.
Yeah, yeah, so that's more than thirty days.
Yep, I'm good with that.
And so like uh, probably have a deadline, two days before the meeting or something because I'm, I again, just heard things are getting lost in the mail and.
That's gonna be.
Something we have no control over, but if we uh, if we put it a few days before, hopefully it will.
April tenth would be our meeting.
Okay.
So by April seventh, that would be the Monday before.
Monday. Okay. Sounds easy enough, any other comments on that? Okay, Michelle, you're on.
Nothing here to report, got through the end of the year things and we're just moving along.
We have our new commitment report here.
Say that again.
I said you gave us our.
I gave you your, yes, where we're at. Um, last week I'd had the flu, so I was a little frazzled this week, but we're good now.
Wasn't the bird flu, was it?
No, it was the flu flu. Skylar gave it to me and everyone else at work, but otherwise all is well.
Good, thank you. Okay, the next item, we have received a letter from the auditors. That says, select board, uh, Pam and I would like a raise in pay as near to twenty dollars as possible. We have been here, me over two years and Pam over one year. The work is not so easy right now and takes longer to do. Right now, it takes once, three hours a month. Appreciate whatever you can do. Thanking you in advance, sincerely Lana Burden. And um, in case anyone does not know, the rate of pay for the auditors is fifteen dollars an hour. So the only one who gets less than that on the town payroll is the uh dump day assistant at fourteen dollars an hour.
What is their, their actual time that they're using up?
So she's saying they work three hours once a month. Now, if it all falls upon one per, well, I have no idea how the write-in thing is going to go, but if it, if nobody gets written in, if that's the scenario that takes place, then we would have only one auditor and I think it might be logical to assume that the auditor would be working six hours a month.
Yeah, pop in there. So Lana was here Wednesday for three hours, just just Lana. And I also, just because you brought up the dump attendant thing, Vermont minimum wage this year, minimum wage is fourteen oh one. So your dump attendant is gonna need a raise also, or you're, you know.
Well, if you want to address that, well, we'll get in trouble if we do something that's not on the agenda.
Yes, but that will need to be, because we're dumping, because this. So she was here three hours by herself.
So it's fourteen oh one?
Yes.
Thinking where we want to go, I mean, it's fifteen now, if you want to get someone that's gonna do the job.
Well, she's asking for as close to twenty as possible and if we look at some of the other positions in town, uh, the highest would be the road foreman at twenty-seven dollars an hour. The ballot clerks get sixteen dollars an hour, the lead lister gets seventeen dollars an hour. The dump day money collector gets sixteen dollars an hour, the assistant town treasurer gets fifteen dollars an hour.
What we budgeted too for that, I'm just trying to break it down, see how many hours they're putting in, you know, we budgeted. You know, if you look, this is from.
Maybe we're on there three.
But for twenty-six and twenty-five and twenty-four, twenty-five hundred dollars budgeted, I'm trying to think how many hours in our actual.
Yeah, so that's this year's what we're operating on. So we budgeted uh basically eighteen hundred dollars and we have used six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Basically halfway through the year, so it looks like there's somewhere in the neighborhood of fourteen dollars or uh, four hundred dollars to work with.
Three, I mean, I'm I'm okay with a raise, I just try to feel if it's, you know, if you go.
I think in this day and age, we need to consider raises pretty much across the board.
Right.
It's been a while since any of the people have had raises. I cannot, or I should not make a motion, but I would toss out the figure of eighteen dollars.
That's what I was gonna say, is eighteen.
Yeah, I was.
But that was my, so I can make, I mean, I'll make a motion, I mean, for eighteen dollars an hour for the others.
Okay. So we have a motion for eighteen dollars an hour, is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor of eighteen dollars an hour, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And then we have the delinquent tax collectors report and we have Doug here to know.
I don't really have too much to add other than what the agenda says for, I guess it's for twenty twenty-four, we've got ninety, what did they say, ninety?
Ninety-two thousand, five fifty-seven and seventy-seven pennies.
And that's just for the twenty twenty-four tax year, the year that's closed.
Yeah, I didn't, you know, you've got quite a report there.
Yeah, if you, if you want totals for for all years that are else here, there's about a hundred thousand totally out there. That's really about all I've got to add right now. I'll be coming back to you guys again, probably in April or May, with a list that I'd like to come to you with for.
The tax.
Tax, I'm with probably five or six properties looking at it right now, but that could change in the next month or so, probably, probably April, if I could get on the agenda in April to.
Okay.
Come to you with that.
Do you have some of that uh monies that expected in on that number? You know, someone is.
Before I decide which properties to go with for tax sale?
Um, yeah, but on that uh, on that ninety-two, um, if you had somebody come up front and say, okay, it's, I'm gonna be giving you something.
Oh, yeah, definitely, I've got, there's the twenty twenty-four tax year for the next month to two months, um, you'll see that drop pretty drastic.
Okay.
First four months is always super busy, then after that, things get tough tougher and you have to decide, you know, is it time to put this property up or is it not? The states change regulations and the timing of everything too, so that makes it even tougher. But we're pretty up on it, government tools got me in the loop pretty good, so by April, I should have a good idea of which properties we'll go after. So if you could just make a note there and put me on your.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions for Doug? Okay, then we will move on and um sadly, Dreya is leaving us after town meeting, so we need to discuss posting for an open public meetings law facilitator to record minutes and coordinate remote access participation. We did budget money for that.
As she wasn't here. Listen, you're good as your heart, correct?
Oh, yeah, I volunteered for three years.
We're not asking you to volunteer, just asking you to stay.
No, well, I think it was appreciated what you did, just for me speaking for myself.
We very much appreciate what you've done and continue to do.
I think it's worth thanking you for that, by the way. But.
Can we twist your arm a little more?
Probably not. So I think that has to happen pretty soon, too.
The what?
The posting of that have to happen pretty soon, too. I'm not sure you're gonna twist her arm enough.
Yeah, I know.
So. We got town meeting and then that's it.
Yeah, town meeting and the organizational meeting, because that's when, I'm assuming that's when you would.
So you will be here for that reorganization?
For that Thursday? Yes, I was under that assumption.
And then it's only a week past that that we have the March regular select board meeting.
Because I know in the past, that's when you have asked me to continue, was at the organizational meeting.
See what we can do with that.
Do you have any recommendations for someone to replace you?
At this time, I do not.
Yeah, so, yeah, so you probably shouldn't.
So we need to get that posted and we had said seventy-five dollars per meeting, which includes uh taking the minutes, running the remote access, writing up the minutes and posting them.
Right, no, roughly what you'd said it takes.
Yes.
For time, so.
Okay, so, simple advertisement stating that it's seventy-five dollars a meeting.
And then what, I guess if it's worth mentioning what she's using, you know, what you use for the meetings, you know, is it worth.
The microphone is the town.
Right.
Yeah.
But you're, no, I'm just saying what, so they know whoever's applying, if they apply for it, they know what they're gonna be doing and make sure it's clear what they're.
And where should we advertise this? There's no requirement that it needs to be a Danby voter or anything, it's a higher position.
Well, once again.
We know our usual places, but they might not reach far enough, I don't know. But a news guide ad would certainly reach a good radius.
Yeah, I think that we should go to the guide with that one, just because of.
Is that Lakes Region paper still available tonight? You know, there's, there's like a sister to the news guide that takes place like around Granville or something.
Not familiar with that.
Me either, but to me, the traditional ones, anything online is gonna help and that's the way to go nowadays, everything's online is the, so traditional, plus though, you know, word of mouth, maybe, hopefully she'll drum up some business for us.
And we're looking at twelve plus, what?
Well, yeah, we should put in the expectation, you know, right, you know, there's twelve regular meetings plus you have.
Plus we have some special meetings, too.
Special, you know.
Yeah, because we had, we did the budget stuff ahead of our meeting.
And I think last year you had probably three special meetings?
That was kind of what my thought was, is just so they know it could be, you know, fifteen, fifteen evenings or.
Right.
So I guess I will make a motion to advertise that. Um, which.
The news guide, the front porch forum, I mean, anything we can.
Yeah.
Trying to think of other avenues, I'm open suggestion too, if you have any other suggestions of where to put it.
So if we put it on the website, that automatically goes to front porch.
Okay.
She posts on front porch and says, see the link on the website. We can go to the Rockland Herald, but it's expensive.
It's expensive and we have to have, you have to have a.
So I'm pausing that motion.
You what?
I said I'm pausing that motion, so I'm thinking of finishing.
Right.
I don't, off the top of my.
No, I know, I'm just trying to be, is it really worth, is it worth it, we gotta get some.
Add this big or do you want to add that big?
We're gonna hit a lot of people that are really looking for this job through it. I, but.
We can make some calls around too and talk to some of our neighboring towns, see who records their.
Right.
Things and maybe that, some of those people might be interested.
Who does Mount Tabor's?
Why didn't you ask that question?
Probably Bill Bassa.
I believe it is.
Is that?
Sure, yeah.
Have you ever watched any of their remote meetings?
No, just when we were at the meeting, but it means a little bit different than these.
And do they have somebody sitting there with a?
Yeah, well, she was sitting off the table with a computer with the camera facing the table.
Is it Noah Leaks?
I'm not sure, Brad.
So that might be a lead.
Should ask him, I'm sure he can figure it out, but.
Well, he's easy enough to contact.
He's just pretty.
Okay, well, we'll get it advertised, uh, if.
Yep.
You're making a motion to advertise it in the news guide website, why don't we say and other media?
That sounds good.
If we think of something.
You're gonna put a date, we're gonna put some kind of date we want, right, or something or, you put a deadline, so.
Yeah, because we're running out of time, aren't we?
Quick.
What is?
March thirteenth is the meet, the first regular meeting, I believe, March thirteenth.
And actually, we should probably ask for this for the reorganization meeting because And actually, we should probably ask for this for the reorganization meeting, because we need someone to be on board for that meeting.
Not much time.
No.
No. That meeting on the Thursday, the reorganization meeting, that's the sixth, right?
What day of the week is the sixth?
The town meeting's Tuesday, the third.
Yeah.
So then it's that Thursday, the sixth.
Let me get the right month.
Well, it's, I mean, we, that would be a good time to set it. We usually have it on a Saturday morning.
Oh, I thought it was only the following Thursday.
It could be, and I guess at this point, I'm sure we'd be willing to set it at a time that works for you. Is Saturday morning a bad time?
Yes.
Okay, so you would rather see it on a Thursday evening?
Monday marks Thursday.
Yeah, town meeting's the third, voting's Tuesday.
Yeah, the fourth.
So that would be on the fifth, the reorganization.
Fifth would be Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes.
Fifth would be Wednesday, sixth would be Thursday.
Oh, you're saying town meeting, the floor meeting?
Floor meeting, the third voting's the fourth.
Right, the Australian ballots on the fourth, so the fifth is Wednesday, and then the sixth would be what you would like to see. So we would, they could come in during the day on the sixth, I guess. And I mean, I, I think we'll put in the advertisement to email your.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you gotta give as much time as you can, because it's already the thirteenth, so I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
So it's March sixth. So Ken made the motion, Greg seconded it, and any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 And since we got into this, I guess we should have a motion to set the time and date for the reorganization meeting. Which sounds like Thursday, March sixth. Do you want it at our regular time of seven, or?
Yep, that'll work. I'll make a motion for March sixth at seven o'clock.
My motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Did I hear an aye come out of your mouth?
Yes.
Aye.
I may put in the.
Okay, so now we move on to, thank you, Michelle. Now we move on to Lynn. Can you get her unmuted?
Lynn, you're now up on the agenda.
Okay, before you begin, Lynn, can you hear me? Lynn, can you hear me? Lynn, can you hear us?
I can hear.
Okay, so before you begin, I would like to read a few things which are taken from this document called Guidance for Municipalities, and it mentions certain things that are covered by Vermont statute in regard to the Cannabis Control Board. One of those is a municipality must not use ordinances or bylaws to create de facto prohibit, prohibition on cannabis establishments, create rules governing the operation of cannabis establishments, or otherwise condition a cannabis establishment's ability to operate on any basis other than its compliance with the zoning bylaws adopted pursuant to twenty-four VSA subsection forty-four fourteen, or ordinances regulating signs or public nuisances under twenty-four VSA subsection twenty-two ninety-one. State law, pro, state law limits municipal regulatory authority over licensed outdoor cultivation. Licensed outdoor cultivation is subject to required agricultural practices overseen by the state, not municipal bylaws. Withholding, conditioning, suspending, or revoking a local license for any reason other than those described above is a violation of state law. So I just wanted us to be clear on that before you make your presentation. So now you may proceed.
Oh, first of all, I had written, you know, a letter, and I wrote, I wrote it, and Janice told me that she was going to forward it to everybody in the town, and you were the only one who responded, disapproving the fact that you thought that I was signaling you out, and what I had actually said was that I did not know if you had, if you had shared my conversations with you to the other board members. So let me just say that first and foremost.
Can we turn you up? I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
Well, I guess you, I guess you can on your half.
I have her.
You know, I can't speak any louder on my half. You heard me, you heard me before.
I know, and it, it was louder than it is now for some reason.
I haven't changed, I haven't changed anything.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Okay, so I have been, I have been, and I'm not sure I understood exactly what, what, you know, you just read, because of all the bylaws and this, that, and the other thing, but I had been, had conversations with the chairboard of Cannabis Control, the chairman of the Cannabis Control Board, he, he informed me that it was up to the town to decide what they were willing to do and what they were not willing to do. He also agreed, agreed that the cannabis, legalized cannabis was, was done, they had, let me speak clearly here, that they had, they had actually done it without doing all their due diligence on how it was going to affect the people that were around it, involved with it. You know, not everybody can tolerate, you know, the cannabis. It is, it is, it is, it's a nuisance, it's, it's a horrid smell, people have allergies to it, respiratory disorders to it. They said that they were going to put it up for this year and try to figure out how they were going to basically correct their hastiness to pass the law without, without exploring all the, you know, all the, all the, listen, I'm really tired, I've had a long day, you know, I, you know, so anyway, they passed, they passed the law way before they should have, you know, even Governor Scott didn't want them to pass the law before putting more investigation into it. You know, I've been round and round with this thing, and, you know, quite frankly, I don't really give a shit what my neighbor wants to do with his cock, you know? If he wants to smell it in his house all day long, that's his business, but when it starts affecting my health and my quality of life, then it becomes my problem. And the, the, the person that gave him the license, you know, when I asked Chipper Sullivan, who was the compliance officer who gave him the license, what exactly was he thinking? He said he didn't, it wasn't really his problem, because it wasn't written into his bylaws of what he could and couldn't do. Now, according to the Cannabis Control Board, you know, there were, there were stipulations for growing for this type of operation. One, you couldn't, weren't supposed to be able to see it from the road, and two, you know, so when I, which you can clearly see it from the road, I can clearly see it from my driveway, it's out in plain freaking sight, it's about twenty-five feet away from my driveway, which I access every day, my gardens are up there, that's, you know, I spend a lot of my time up there, this smell comes down into my house, and for anybody to tell me that it's, it's an agriculture practice, it is not. It is not growing corn, it is not a dairy farm. I've been around a lot of farms, I was a herd health manager on the Ferguson Hacks Farm in the Northeast for three years, that stuff smells nothing like a farm. I have been to the Fisk Farm, I have been to many dairy farms, and there is no comparison. So they use that as a, they use that as a tactic to get the law passed as an agricultural practice. So anyway, without like going on and on, I was informed that the town had the right to decide whether, what they would and would not allow in the town, and when I asked them why the town was responsible for, for the monster that they had created, that, he said that that's what they were, that's what they were doing.
So did he say specifically what the town could do?
Well, the town, like, the town could decide whether they, they wanted, he said that the town could decide whether they would allow it or whether they would not allow it, and the town could also make the restrictions of what they would and would not allow.
This is Greg Keaton. I know the town, the towns have the right to take it to opt-in to retail establishments, but as it is not, you do not have the right to vote or opt in or out of cultivation or the other things. We only have, the town of Danby a few years ago actually voted, opted in for retail establishments, but that's the only thing the town can vote yes or no on, is whether they accept retail.
And as you said, they're covering this under the farm law, so one could say, I don't like smelling cow manure, and I want you to do something about the cows on the farm, which clearly the law says we cannot do, so.
Well, this, this is, this has become, this is a health hazard for me. This is a breathing hazard for me. This is affecting my health, it is affecting my life, it is affecting my value on my real estate, you know, it, it, and none of you, unless you are experiencing this, would even begin to know what it is like. So like, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know what, what to say, but it is, you know, it's, it's, it's a health hazard for me. You know, last year, I had to go to my doctor three times because of my breathing issues. My, you know, my partner suffers from asthma, it causes, you know, respiratory disorders.
You know, I understand your concerns, I'm just not sure, I really believe it's, it's a, the town's hands, I don't see how we have a, you know, and.
Well, according to James Pepper, who's the chairman of the Cannabis Control Board, the town has the right to decide and make a decision.
Decision as far as granting the license for the tier two?
Let's just, let's just use this as an example, the town of Manchester, even though the town of Manchester has dispatch areas in your town, you know, stores, retail operations, they would not allow anybody to grow cannabis in the town.
But is that a zoning requirement for Manchester?
Sounds like that's what Lynn is saying.
I can't speak to Manchester.
Right.
I can't either.
You know, there's farms that are in Manchester.
There's what?
There's farms in Manchester, you know, Ivan Beatty has that, that, you know, that big huge Morgan Horse Farm.
Right here, it says, state law provides that cannabis cultivators will not be regulated as farming, and cannabis will not be considered agricultural product or crop. As a result, cannabis and cannabis cultivators will not receive tax and regulatory benefits. It's just, if that Mr. Pepper says we have, I don't know where, I don't see anywhere in the, in the laws that say we have a right outside of zoning bylaws, outside the statute, covers signs and says nuisances.
Could you ask Mr. Pepper to put that in writing and address it to our select board?
Right, well, sure, I guess I can, and I, you know, I will, I'll still get in touch with Brian Calamore, because he's the one that, that, you know, that I spoke with in the beginning, him and Terry Weeks, and, you know, Brian Calamore is definitely on my side. You know, you, when I had approached you, told me that, you know, if, if, what I had asked you, Brad, personally, if you could investigate this, you said you didn't have time to do it, and, and I also quote, you said you, you, you didn't get paid enough, and you referred me to Samantha Pierce. Now, I contacted Samantha Pierce, and I don't know what her involvement was in all of this, but then she referred me to somebody else, who referred me to somebody else, who referred me to somebody else, and then I got another letter, you know, another email letter from, from another woman, and I can't remember her name without going into my, into my, you know, my saved emails, and, you know, she also informed me that, like, you know, they were trying to redo the law, so blah, 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 blah. But they, and I quote, James Pepper, the chairman for the Cannabis Control Board, did in fact tell me that they were moving it up to the towns to decide whether, what, what they would and would not. what they would and would not allow in their townhouse. And it didn't matter if the town didn't have zoning."
No, a town can pass an ordinance without having zoning, just like we have speed ordinances and so forth.
Right. But it clearly states your ordinance cannot single out cannabis.
Exactly.
Or it has to be applicable to every business.
Right, so that's why I'm asking Mr. Pepper to put this in writing.
Okay, well, I will, I will go back through my, through what I, like, um, what I have, um, well, to give pepper about, and see if I can get him to, uh, write up something, and then I can forward it to you. That's the best I can do.
And that's, right, that's the best we can do, because I just read, and, um, we've been referring to these statutes that tell us what we cannot do. So, I don't understand why he's saying we can do something, and according to what's put out by Mr. Pepper himself, quoting the law, seems to be in conflict with each other.
Well, I mean, you know, why would I say to Mr. Pepper, "Well, that is the silliest thing I've ever heard of. Why is the town responsible for something that you created?" Instead, what? You are making a town responsible for something that was your responsibility in the beginning that you neglected to take care of because you were in a hurry to pass a law without doing your due diligence of how it was going to affect people. Not everybody can, you know, it, I mean, there has to be, there has to be some, there has to be some setback to, to this type of thing. You know, I have a friend who lives up in the Northeast Kingdom, um, and he's a grower, and he's a friend of mine. And, you know, I don't care if he wants to grow, but, you know, he is like a respectable kind of guy. You know, the, the people, the neighbors don't even know he has an operation because he has it hidden from the public eye. And he's in, and he has it in such a way where it's not affecting his neighbors. And he was the first person I called to find out what I need to do and what the laws were about this. So, um, you know, um, he, he just couldn't believe that, he just couldn't believe that that, that this was even allowed to be, this was even allowed to happen, the way it was happening. And I can tell you, I can tell you this. If this was next to your house and it was infiltrating your front door when you walked out in the morning for months at a time, and you could barely breathe trying to grow your food in your own field, then you would have a huge problem. And I don't need to yell at you if you, if you think I'm coming across strong, but I am telling you, I don't know how I'm going to be able to live on my property comfortably and grow my food so I can eat because of this, and breathe, more importantly. Just saying. So, I will do what I can. I will contact, I will contact, uh, James Pepper, and I will, you know, or I will give you his contact information.
No, anytime I've called there, I just get the big runaround that you were talking about, so if he will put something in writing...
Well, I mean, that's basically what they've done to me.
Yeah. And you see...
They told me that, then they just, you know, give me, they just give me a, a, a big old runaround, and everybody says the same thing. "Oh, we're really sorry, we're so sorry, when we're working on ways to, to rectify this, and blah, 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 blah." And, you know, I mean, um, I just, you know, um, I, I just, I, I don't, I just don't know what to do. But I, you know, I couldn't, I, at this point, I don't even know if I'd be able to even sell my property, because nobody's going to want to live next to that.
Sounds to me like it's another case of where we have bureaucrats running the show instead of elected people, and this is what we get.
So, anyway.
Okay.
So, I guess, I guess that's it, because I don't know what, I don't know what else to say, and I'm, I'm like, I'm really pretty tired.
Okay, thank you for your time, and, um, if you can get that to us, then we'll see what we can do.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, have a good evening.
Hey, well, thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the road commissioner's report, and since neither Steve or Tom are here, we won't be having much of a report, but we do have a fleet permit from Newport Sand and Gravel to approve. Want to take a look at that?
You guys usually handle these. I mean, we never set any restrictions, we're, we just approve.
Um, and they get a letter that, what does that letter say? Remember, we came up with that last year.
I know we talked about the insurance letter, but that's...
So, yeah, 'cause I know we have the letter on file. I don't have it right in front of me, but I, I think it talks about, you know, when the roads are posted and the requirement for insurance.
We'll inform whether it goes back once we approve it, we send in with that form letter. I just wanted to see how the, how it works.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't, I don't know much, this is kind of gets beyond my, what we're...
Right. That's triaxle truck, triaxle trailer.
Yep. I don't have a problem.
And I, I think the letter says if they create damage to the road, you have responsibility. Okay, so would somebody care to make a motion to approve the fleet permit for Newport Sand and Gravel?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion is made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Listen to that wind. Okay, motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, under new business, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Ann Davis as the health officer. I'm not sure that anybody has spoken with her, so I would, um, encourage the mover of the motion to say pending her acceptance. The state, let me read that letter, let it go. The state's in a yank because it, um, has a deadline.
Did you make this one?
They have a deadline that's coming up, I think it's the 28th of February, so they, they want the position covered by then. Oh, here we go. Uh, I am writ- this is from Meg McCarthy, who's the compliance and enforcement advisor to the Environmental Health Division of the Vermont Department of Health. And she says, "I am writing to you regarding the town health officer's term of office, which will expire on 2/28," I got that right, "25. We would like to have a recommendation from the select board for a town health officer to serve for the next three years. The law provides that the Department of Health appoint a health officer upon recommendation of the select board. Thus, we urge you to give this matter your immediate attention."
I will make a, a motion to...
Recommend her?
Yeah, recommendation for Ann Davis. Yep.
Or acceptance.
Or acceptance.
Or acceptance, that's a good word.
Sorry.
Okay, did you get that, Brad? Okay, motion's made. Second?
I'll second it.
And all, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Ann, if you're watching, I hope you'll accept.
Yes, please.
Congratulations. Uh, I don't have any other business, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Um, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Do you second it?
Yep.
That's one of the motions that we don't discuss, so all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned at, uh...
8:41.
8:41.